Received validation for your opinion.
The county board of supervisors, October 18th meeting notice of agenda was posted in the government center building in two places, posted on the county website on October 7th, 2022, and was published in a legal newspaper the week of October 10th, published on October 12th. In addition, on Friday, October 7th, 2022, at 1:38 PM, the office of the county clerk distributed copies and such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email or mail. And the notice of the amended agenda was posted in the government center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice meetings were distributed to the supervisors and media via email or mail on Friday, October 14th, 2022.
That complies with the open meetings, though.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Hornedal.
Here.
Ryan Wood.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Rock.
Here.
Barbara McAfee.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Tim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Denise Lally and Prey.
Here.
Russ Arcand.
Here.
DJ Simmons.
Here.
John Bonaprise.
Here.
All members are here.
I mean, the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
On the agenda, move to approve the agenda as reasoned.
I would like to make a motion on the agenda, remove resolution 4622 and send it back to committee.
And with that.
This is.
Who's going to move?
You made the motion, you made the motion.
I made the motion and gave made an addition to the motion.
Sorry, I missed that. For which one to be sent back to committee?
Forty-six twenty-two.
I checked on that.
Just so we're clear, we have a motion to approve the agenda, and then there was a request to have that motion amended to be approved the agenda with the exception of that particular resolution having sending that one back to committee, and then that was seconded. So you, if you were, just so I, I want to make sure that we know what we're voting on. The way I understand procedurally, if you vote yes, you will accept the agenda as presented minus that resolution, but it will go back to committee.
That's always given.
Okay.
Now that it's been seconded, like, is that something for discussion or does that have to be voted on?
Yes, that's.
What would you like to go back to committee for?
The public, including anybody who doesn't sit on general government. I didn't see this resolution, never knew it was coming until 10:30 Friday morning. It wasn't on the agenda for general government. It wasn't on the agenda originally for the county board until it was amended. And then the, I don't know, whatever you want to call them, talking points, bullet points. My understanding is did not even come to general government, they came after general government on the county board agenda. And I mean, if this is the way resolutions are going to come to the county board, I can deal with, I'm fine with it, but I, I think the county residents deserve some transparency. As, as far as what's there, I mean, you go back, look at the minutes of this September meeting of general government, and it directed county staff to write a resolution to come to the county board. But it didn't come through general government, it seemed to be handed out at the last second where no one could see it. I watched the general government right up until the meeting, it never hit the general government agenda. And it took until Friday at 10 o'clock for it to amend the agenda. It isn't about if I'm for or against the resolution, it's about the process of how we do things, and if we're not going to tell the public what we're doing until two and a half business days before county board meeting, and not before committee meeting at all, we, we are in trouble.
What is it that you're saying wasn't present? Because this issue has been talked about at general government multiple times. Were you at the last county board meeting? We also discussed that at the last county board meeting. And that this was, that this was going to be brought up. There's been plenty of discussion about it, and there's been plenty of foresight as to when it was going to be talked about again. I think a lot of people in this room have been attesting when it's been talked about. So I think it's just a misrepresentation to say that this came out of nowhere, it's been talked about.
So why, so I guess my question is, why wasn't it on the general government agenda?
What wasn't on the agenda? Because this has been in the general government.
Resolution was not in.
So we had, I gotta think back to Jim Gov.
Um. We didn't have a resolution.
It was on the agenda. It was on the agenda, it was not in the packet.
The resolution wasn't?
The resolution wasn't. The agenda says, review of a possible draft resolution on a proposed plan to develop local senior housing. That's, that's pretty vague to our, to our constituents out there. Just what we're going to talk about is that there's a possibility, and then it's handed out at the last second where. This is, I agree with you, Ryan, this has been coming for a month. I mean, back in September, general government told staff to draft the resolution. So why wasn't it on general government? Why wasn't it in the, in, in the, in the county board packet to start with? Why did it come two and a half days before our meeting, two and a half business days before our meeting? That's my problem with it. Not what the resolution says, not what the resolution does. It's the simple fact that if this is the process that we're going to take to bring resolutions forward, we're in danger of the public never knowing anything of what this county board does, because no one knows what's, what's here tonight.
Mr. Chair. Go ahead. I got a call today about the same, this comes, somebody in the general public stating the same thing that you, that you said, and that's why I seconded.
I was at, I was at the EDC breakfast this morning, and I had multiple people coming up to me and saying, good luck on your, without discussion or prompting, good luck on your resolutions tonight. Like, I've had people, so, I mean, we've all got anecdotal situations about whether or not people knew about this, and.
What are the minutes indicate of general government?
Yeah.
Have them ready? September minutes?
The September minutes? Nope.
Yeah, October minute, or October minute.
I can, I, I don't know if you can pull them up and read them, but.
I can pull them up. The only thing about this resolution was, it was a review and possible draft resolution on proposed plan to develop local senior housing, motion to move the resolution along to the board with mutual recommendation. Discussion and motion carried.
So it was discussed in general government. I know you have a resolution there, and recommended. Yeah. The, the error, the reason it was an amended agenda was because the, when we looked at the draft agenda for this board meeting, the clerk had it, had said, are we putting something on here? She put it on the lit, on the agenda, and nobody got back and said yea or nay, and she. In fact, I went and asked her about it, I said, nope, that's supposed to be on the agenda, and she said, I'm sorry, but nobody ever said yes or no. So we just amended it as soon as we found out.
And I don't think I was on any of that conversation, so I didn't.
Okay, let's act on the motion.
Mr. Chair, may I just address one procedural thing? Because this amendment, or excuse me, this resolution would direct the administrator to include in his proposed budget, A, this topic, this, this program fund. By sending it to committee and not addressing it before November's budget meeting, it kills it completely. Now, that doesn't mean the administrator can't still put it in there as a possibility for the full board to consider in November. The only difference would be the full board had directed him to do so. But it does procedurally completely kill this particular resolution, it would never come back. So sending it to committee is truly a vote to not pass, just so everybody's clear.
Okay, is it clear on the amend, on the. Stands on that, we, it's asked to be amended? We are acting on the amendment?
Your, your procedural is, is to send it back to committee and proceed with the agenda without it. That is the vote you're having now.
On the motion, everybody understand what your vote will do? This, just for, it's just to take it on or off the agenda, is all we're voting on right now.
And approving the rest of the agenda.
Yeah.
It was a combined.
So this one is, it's either, we're going to take it up later when it comes up or not? No.
No, we're not going to take it. I think you just said it's dead.
We voted off.
We voted off.
But if it stays on, we'll take it up later and discuss. Yeah.
The voting yes is taking it off, the voting no is taking it?
And is it correct that it says it takes two-thirds to bring the floor? Unless, that's what it says on here, on mine, at least. Vote required two-thirds to bring to the floor. Any majority? I don't know why that's on it.
It would not need two-thirds, it would need a straight majority. That's probably my scripness here.
On the motion, all in favor?
Can, can we clarify again? Because it's kind of confusing. A yes, a yes vote is a vote to remove it from the agenda.
Correct.
A no vote is to keep it on the agenda as scheduled.
Right. I will call vote.
Okay, Russ Arcand.
Yeah.
DJ Simmons.
Yes.
John Bonaprise.
Yeah.
Brad Olson.
Yes.
Doug Rowdy.
No.
Steve Hornedal.
Yes.
Ryan Wood.
No.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Yeah.
Dan Rock.
Yes.
Barbara McAfee.
No.
Sharon Kelly.
Yes.
Tim O'Connell.
Yes.
Amy Middleton. Denise Lally and Prey.
No.
That is nine yeses and five no's.
Okay, that'll be removed from this agenda. With that exception, need a vote on the approval of the agenda.
Move.
Eight and six.
Second.
Matter. All in favor?
All in favor.
Go the same side. Okay, matters offered for adoption on consent agenda. The portion of three, resolution forty-two, twenty-two, forty-three, twenty-two, and the force.
I'll second it.
End of minutes. Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded on matters for adoption of A, B, C, and D on the agenda. All in favor?
All in.
I had a question.
Oh, you have a question?
Um, on resolution with the town of Garfield piece is, are we, what's the process for this? Was this that the town came to us and then we just have to approve it? Is that how that works?
They have their own zoning.
Yeah.
And we approve it to make sure it's with the comp plan also.
Well, they brought, they sent, stuff that's in the red, they send to us, and then we say, yeah, that's okay.
But they, we go through it and look at it at committee level, okay, so they go through it, make sure it doesn't conflict with all that comprehensive plan that they have set.
Okay, so let's just matching the couple's app.
Yeah, so Garfield does it, sacred halls do it.
Okay.
Any public comment? Do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Now, we're going to, oh. Certain, number ten, you wanted to update yours prior to the presentation of the administrators operating in the public project.
I'd love to.
I bet.
You leave one. Model of the board was corrected. Uh, just a quick update on the government center project. They think right now we're dealing with is, we have no heat in the building. We have no AC either, but don't need that. Right now, we're doing temporary heaters in there right now, space heaters today. Uh, we have nine fifty thousand UCU larger units coming in tomorrow to help offset the whole pot on that. Um, we don't expect the boiler to be online until November 7th. Once we're into phase three, on the offices move, we demo that, then we can get the piping done, get the system filled with lycall, and get that system back online. So it does take a little bit of time for that, so. County staff has been very good dealing with that and layering up a little bit, you know, since they're at fifty-eight degrees this morning, so they're in Philly. Um, other than that, we're still dependent on me timed on items, our doors did come in finally, and our door brings. So the movements for the offices are still next week for the second floor, and then the week of Halloween for EERC and the vets. Well, that is still on track for that. Um, other than that, we are moving forward with, uh, pouring the pads for generators and the chillers outside. Um, we got the camera, uh, systems run to the light all front. So all that's in progress. Well, that's, that's the latest right now, uh, still trending, um, on the same on the budget.
Is our November meeting going to be at the?
Uh, the HVAC is supposed to go, or excuse me, the AV is supposed to go in the boardroom the last week of October. The furniture is supposed to be installed the second week of November. All that being said, that works out? Yes.
Checking on you, Dr. Bull.
Wait, there's a timing, so hopefully that the November meeting, we can't hold, hold it now, but. Hope for that.
You're saying we got. Ask question? Yes, I have. And the numbers that we're looking at, what do you think the overrun's going to be?
We're still training.
Maxed it?
Two hundred and forty-six thousand.
Over right now, without phase two, you're two forty-six over?
That's projected throughout the end of the project, uh, over states that we're seeing right now. Which is, it's a set two to three percent. We will have some credits coming back in for temporary cooling. That was in the budget that we didn't, uh, do that many weeks of temporary cooling. But we're still training at two to three percent over budget.
And it's over contingency respect.
Correct. That's all in.
Any other questions?
Or I did you?
Administrator, that was the quickest yet.
All right, thank you. I will say that while it's been cold, people have been working hard to put together the budget and warming up the room temperature a little bit. So I'm going to give you a little presentation on how we put together the operating budget. You do have in front of you this right here. I'll tell you briefly that this is merely a draft of the budget. It's not complete, that's why we have draft all over it. Keep in mind that, uh, part of the reason is draft, because anything we do or say in this room changes. What's been considered or proposed changes all the numbers in here, changes many of them. But you'll see in here the levy calculation, the budget summaries, and FTEs account by code. Those of you who've been around, you've seen that report before, we, it, it's hard to understand because it's by account numbers, not by alphabetical order or anything. But then you also have things like the capital improvement plan and the fee schedule has been approved. So all that is in here. After tonight, we hope to be able to go back and update the number, and, uh, then we'll have the final draft. One of the things you approved in the consent agenda, just so you know, was a resolution, it's kind of a boilerplate resolution, that, uh, allows us to publish this and provide it to the papers and to the public so that we can have a public hearing next week for the board meet, or next month for the board meet.
So that will start?
That'll start at five thirty.
As usual.
Yeah, five thirty for public comment, and we'll have that available. So, um, one thing I want to do, though, is I, I want to give special thanks to some people. Uh, there are a lot of people have put a lot of work in on this, and, and Don Wurlem, our general government director, has really spearheaded this. Sherry Poyer, our finance manager in back, I don't know if you've met her yet, accountant, auditor, uh, you know, she is, is punching, crunching the numbers, making sure we're on track. And of course, Tammy and the staff, Sherry's staff up there have just been outstanding, and they really pulled together. So if I could start here, you see here the topics in this presentation. We'll talk about opportunities and challenges. I'll give you a brief snapshot of how the budget, uh, let falls out. We'll get into more detail talking about revenue and expenditures. I'll dig into some of the fund balances that are of importance to us. I'll highlight then the capital projects that are, we're proposing, and then, uh, you as board members will have some decisions to make on certain specific, uh, items. So, next slide, opportunity. We do have some great opportunities, and I think over the, the three years that I've been here, you all set some priorities for us, and that helps us a great deal. It enables us to identify opportunities to vote resources or consider spending resources on those priorities that you all set. Keep in mind, and I'll say this several times throughout this presentation, that in the spring of twenty-three, we'll be resetting new priorities. Could be the same priorities, could be different. But think about what we did, especially with parks and trails, some of the things we're doing there. Think about broadband and how we really invested some money there. Uh, you may have new priorities come May, in which, you know, we'll want to spend some, some resources there. So, when you get to that general fund, uh, balance of how much money you can spend, keep in mind, you don't want to spend it all probably, because there may be other things that are important for you to go down the road. And that's what I mean by responding strategically to emerging issues. Okay. Challenges, goes without saying, the economy is number one on a lot of people's minds. We know that the inflation has been something significant. We also now are reading about the likelihood of a recession coming on. So those are things that are in the back of our minds as we try to put together this budget. Another key challenge is how do we attract and retain workforce? We've heard a lot about it. We're in the same boat as a lot of people, but we have to make sure we're doing things not only from financial reasons, but also maybe some other benefits to help people, uh, feel, uh, successful, feel wanted, and, and have a rewarding career here.
Yeah, good question about the workforce.
Sure.
Is there some place or way that we can see kind of where things are now? There's some.
Yeah, we're going to get into how many there are.
Okay.
Uh, we'll talk about how we're going to, uh, what are proposed in terms of a cost of living increase and a merit increase.
Alright.
Uh, and it's, you know, what it's based on.
Thank you.
Uh, state funding model. I say that because, uh, you'll see some numbers in here comparing, uh, how much money we have in terms of revenue coming from state sources, federal sources. It's gone down considerably. Uh, we expect that to continue, so that affects our revenue. And then just general budget pressures in terms of, uh, inflation, cost of healthcare, those types of things. Not to mention, uh, any organization is going to have shift, right? An organization that isn't like a hard metal object that never changes its shape. Over time, you're going to have some shifting from here to there based on current needs or priorities. Finally, I put at the bottom here demographic. Just another way to say, we've got an aging population in this county. Certainly, we're going to be working hard to, to keep people here, to bring people into our community, to fill jobs and that type of thing. But that's also something that we have to keep, uh, top of mind. Okay. The snapshot. Good news, our revenues are projected to come in at sixty-one point four million dollars in 2023. Our expenses at sixty-one million. So what that means is, is we've got revenues, we've got expenses in the budget I put forward to you tonight. Uh, it says there a surplus of just under four hundred thousand. Well, that's another way of saying, you know, when I talk to Sherry, well, you do have a surplus, but those funds are really committed to things like our, uh, GAM, uh, recycling, ADRC. There is some money left over, what's left over then goes into my contingency fund, which is available when a project pops up or a need, or we run over something. So basically, I, I would say the revenues and expenses we've got pretty level right now. Um, the levy is just under twenty-three million dollars. That is an increase of three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars from last year. That's based on net new construction. Uh, I've mentioned, I think in previous committees, that the net new construction in this county was strong. Uh, it's about average for the state in terms of dollars. But that includes a lot of big counties, right? If you look at our percentage increases and rank, uh, we're up in the top third. So we are seeing some decent growth relative to other counties. Uh, FTEs, we're always looking at it. We talked a little bit about shifting and so on. Actually, down, uh, we're reporting this year by about twelve, uh, compared to last year. All of that decrease was in game. If you recall, uh, beds, we're not filling as many beds there for, you know, basically because we don't have staff. We've had a lot of open positions. The new business model, we're working with them, because they're going to focus, uh, on about, uh, well, they're at about sixty now or fifty-eight, and we may get that up a little bit. Uh, but we don't need, we didn't have those positions filled last year, so we're reducing the FTEs there. And then finally, you'll see in this budget, we have funds in there where you all move towards priorities of your. So we'll get to that. The next slide. Key budget figure. Total budget, sixty-one point four million and twenty-three. That's compared to sixty-eight, or I'm, yeah, sixty-eight point four and twenty-two. That's about a seven million dollar dip, shrink. Um, this is dropping down largely because of the financing that we did for the reconstruction of the building. So that money was put into our budget from our loan, and so that's not there this year. We also add the two million dollars that we put in the book last year for the clamfall dam. Given when the state said we have that money, that's two million dollars that we will transfer now into twenty twenty-three. So it's just something to keep in mind when you see, hey, wait a minute, you're, you're down two million dollars. Well, you're still to transfer that money over to twenty twenty-three. So revenues and expenditures, you can see the projected surplus there, uh, and then down below here, we have the mill rate three dollars and thirty-four cents per one thousand dollars in valuation. Now, that's less than last year, three point nine percent, or three more, three dollars and ninety cents for one thousand dollars. But keep in mind, the, uh, not on there, our, uh, the appraisals of our properties have gone way up, so the revaluation of our properties have gone up significantly. I'll show you that. So it is kind of a mixed good. I, I had a, an old neighbor give me a pretty nasty text message the other day. He said, gee, where's my house value went up twice? Does that mean my taxes are going up two times? No, taxes are going to stay basically the same when it comes to the county, uh, because the mill rate will come down accordingly. Okay, next. We're going to look at revenue, and go on to the next slide. Equalized values, as I had mentioned, you can see the jump of about a billion dollars in equalized value in, in Polk County. Housing prices have skyrocketed, right? Most of you probably had your house reappraised this year. The appraisers were everywhere. They caught me at two houses. Uh, so, uh, billion dollars, I think that's about, calculated about eighteen and a half percent increase. So, the value of the county is going up. The next slide shows the mill rate, which disproportionately goes down. And that's why, uh, the people's taxes, they'll see value their house up, but the mill rate which we charge or create their property taxes will come down, reflect that. Okay? Most of you have seen this before, how we calculate the levy. This is where Sherry better bet, that they get that formula from the state and we have to calculate everything. We start here, twenty twenty-two, the mill rate of three point nine. The equalized value that year versus the equal. The equalized value that year versus the equalized value this year, you can see the increase eighteen point six percent. And our mill rate has gone down. The other thing I would point out, the net new construction of one and a half percent. My proposed levy is about twenty-three million dollars. Now you'll see there the additional allowable levy. That is actually from last year, we are in actually the previous years. If you recall, last couple of years. In an effort to keep the taxes down, we agreed, uh, to not use all of the levy. This year, we're using all the levy, but we're not going back and using that additional allowable levy this year. We can do that, we can do it next year too. Uh, but when you do that, you tax them, right? It's allowable, but we just have to raise the mill rate slightly, pick up that money. I feel good about this because quite frankly, I think next year will be tighter. So I like the idea of having that, if we need some fun, that may be something we can pull in for the levy next year. Okay, sales tax. Budget estimate, this is, this is an incredible story. I mean, if you if you want to think about it, this has really helped the county, uh, over the last several years. You can see the growth, the budgeted, what we budgeted and the orange is the actual. We project in twenty-twenty-two to receive about four point nine five, just under five million dollars in sales tax. We don't know how long it's gonna keep going up like that, but it's been a good story. What's gonna happen if there's a recession? What's gonna happen if people start losing their jobs and factory orders go down? You're probably gonna see less purchases of those big items, sales tax will be affected somewhat. On the flip side though. My daughter, my wife, my family, everybody orders on Amazon now. We very seldom go to the mall. What that means is when you order it online now, the sales tax comes back to the state which you order. Beforehand, when people drive to the mall and you buy it there, Minnesota got the sales tax. So in a way, I think part of this, not only is the economy and how strong it's been, but I think it's also the emergence of online purchases is helping this county, uh, in terms of their sales tax. So we projected, I think, a very solid number of four point four million. We've talked to our consultants who say they feel comfortable with that number. That, uh, you know, if we go ahead on that, then, you know, we can't guarantee it, but they think four point four is a very realistic number. Okay. Expenses. Big expense, of course, is F T Es and people. A very valuable resource, so I'm I'm happy that that's the case, but you can see here. Uh, we're staying flat in the general center, we're actually up one head count. That head, that F T E, uh, here in the main campus is for the corporation council office. You know, we looked at what that, at what they do and the number of types of cases they take on. And where we were shortchanging that is in the area of, um, child protective services. Deadbeat parents, we need sometimes legal support to to back up our, uh, policies on that. Uh, the other thing is the zoning enforcement. You know, Bob and his staff can find mistakes out there. We're finding more and more of them, or or people who haven't gone through the appropriate process. We can go out and cite them, but sometimes we need to enforce that. And, uh, it's very difficult for Malia and Go to do that when they don't have enough support staff to help them put together a lot of work. So, uh, this is just a person that will be a a staff person for them to help do some of the the work. And then you can see the drop though in terms of gain. All right. This is getting to Barbara's question a little bit. Investing in our team, total rewards. We didn't, we we got a survey of about twenty-three counties in western and northern Wisconsin. And, uh, we looked at their plans for cost of living increases and so on. And so what our philosophy is, we want to be better than average. We want to keep growing our, uh, pay and our benefits for our employees. So the cost of living adjustment that I'm proposing is three point seven percent. In addition to that, many of the employees, uh, who are not, uh. Extremely high in their in their job range will also get or be eligible for a two percent merit increase. So that's about five point seven percent for a lot of our employees to increase. A little below the private sector, but I think it compares favorably, uh, to other county governments. In addition, the other thing you're getting at, I think, Barbara, is a wage study. It's been, uh, I remember talking with Chad about this, I think it's been over ten years since we've had a wage study. And what that is, is you get some objective people to come in and say, how do you pay your employees? How does that compare to other counties, to other governments, in the area and the nation? But it'll give us an idea of how we're doing. It it and we know that in some jobs, we're probably too low. And other jobs, we're really competitive and even, you know, maybe superior in many ways. So that's in the budget this year, that could cost anywhere from twenty-five to fifty thousand. But we, it's something that we have to do so that we can be accurate and remain competitive in the marketplace. Also, in terms of rewarding people, we had. Seven employees who are moving up in grades in each of those cases because of increased responsibilities. Increased assignments that, uh, kind of move them up in terms of their grade. Keeping benefits competitive, uh, and, you know, this is actually a payroll. We are not increasing again for the third year, uh, their premium for health insurance. So those who do get health insurance will not have a raise again. I, having come from the private sector and some of you do as well, that's unheard of. But because we had such a strong health fund balance, we feel like we want to do as much as we can in that regard. It won't be forever. You know, at some point, you know, you have to have a, uh. An organization that shares in this and they feel the importance of being smart and making good judgment in healthcare. So this won't last forever, but we thought let's do it one more year if we can, keep that flat. Total employee related expense, thirty-two point three million. Does anybody remember what our total levy was? Twenty-three million is our levy. So our levy and more goes to our most valuable asset, right, the people, uh, which is good. But we also look at that and say, we have to keep our eye on that, we have to maintain, uh, the expenses there somehow. All right, next slide. Now, one of the things we always talk about in this presentation are outside agencies. In the past, we were flush with cash, we had a lot of people coming, asking for money for the first time. Or they would come back and ask for additional money, uh, the next year. Our feeling was, we need to get some stability in this. We need to make sure that we're not just handing out money. These are all great organizations. And some of them came and asked for more money. Some of them just asked for the same. We looked at it and said, we gotta look at things like, what are they asking? Why, why do they need the money? And if they had a specific need or specific prices or something, that's one thing. But if it was to do more stuff. Then we looked at things like, how are their financial record? What, how, how strong are they financially? How much money do they raise other than from the county? And in all of these cases, we felt very good about the amount of money they were receiving from us. But we did not increase any of them, we kept them the same as last year. Uh, the lone exception is the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. And that's something that is based on the census data, it's like a pact. Uh, it, when the state established these organizations, that, you know, they would get paid based on your population. And, uh, with the census data went up a little bit, so did the amount that we gave them. Uh, you will notice on there, so the total expenditures, two hundred and seven thousand dollars. For outside organizations. One organization that came to us, uh, community referral agency. Outstanding organization, they do good work. First time they've come in several years, since I think Dana was the administrator. And because, and part of it was because of our goals of keeping this thing stable and flat. Uh, I'm not recommending that we give them. Part of that reason is because they were probably the strongest in terms of finance. They have, uh, a high percentage of donations from various organizations. Uh, they get lots of money from other sources. Uh, and so I like them, I want them to keep coming back and that may be something we do next year, but I did not include them here.
What do they do?
Worthy cause, so, um, and and that is not a reflection of that at all, it's just a matter of. Okay. Fund balances, some of the bigger funds. Some of the questions that come up in the committees, since, uh, we changed our financial policy this current year. And said, we want to maintain our general fund at least fifty percent, kind of keep it as our safety, uh, reserve fund. And if you recall the auditor, when they came and said, oh, you got a big surge in your general fund of twenty-eight million. So I asked Sherry and Don to break that down to say, what is it that we truly have left over from that twenty-eight million dollars? When you take out things that we are already committed to spending it on. So, you know, things like, we take out the financing, the eight million dollars in financing, or eight point two million. Uh, we have certain things, uh, like dedicated funds for parks and trails from the line for. The clam fall's dam fund, the five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Is what Northwestern Wisconsin Electric Company gave to us with the dam. That was in their reserve fund, so that if anything happened to the dam and, for example, if we had to take it down. We could use that money, uh, to do that. Uh, ARPA funds that we've already committed. So when you take all of those things out, you're left with two point six seven seven million dollars. Plus, the unallocated ARPA funds, we have not allocated yet, at two point seven nine five million. So then, that red number there, the seven hundred and forty-five thousand. Those are things that I provisionally approve from, uh, additional funding requests from staff. To say, here are projects that we think are important. So I've already asked there to take out another seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And I'll show you all of those items moving forward here. So one way to look at this is the total unencumbered amount over that fifty percent is four point seven million dollars. Yeah.
Didn't we say the damn, we had two million dollars and we have five seventy-four? Earlier you said we.
Yeah.
We're gonna transfer two million.
Well, that two million is that two million that we put in the books when the state said they passed in their budget, we will get that two million dollars. We put that in the book, we never got the money. Here's another fund, this is the five, this is the money that Northwestern Wisconsin Electric had in their, uh, what do you call it, escrow fund.
Where does this, where does the other two million, where is that? In that?
It's in the, to the twenty-twenty-two budget, it will not be spent in twenty-twenty-two, and we will ask you to carry it over to twenty-three.
So, a theme. Thinking ahead. If if, one might say, and certainly your choice, oh, we got four point seven million to spend. We're gonna ask you to think about, choose wisely. Because you saw the challenges coming with the economy and saw some other things. Our bias is choose wisely, not saying you shouldn't spend it, not saying you shouldn't spend part of it. But it's not that much. And 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 we still have fifty percent in reserve, remember that. So that's always there for an emergency. That's with two-thirds vote, we can dip into that in the future. There. Health fund balance. If you recall, this was the fund that our auditors looked at and go, my gosh, you got time about eight million dollars or seven and a half million dollars. Uh, from money that has not been spent on in our health fund, it's getting lard, it was kind of a reserve safety net. So they said, really, you should get that down to about a million or a little less, is about all we recommend. And we can take part of that out each year. We've been taking money out of it, but the first two years that we did it, the the fund actually still grew. We didn't take out enough. This year, in twenty-twenty-two, it looks like we're gonna, we're gonna actually dip into that a little bit more. Because we've had some cases where the expenditure are gonna be high this year. So that happens, that's why you have this reserve fund. But in twenty-twenty-three, we're taking out a little bit more money than we had the first two years, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. In essence, what happens, that gets reallocated to each of the departments who have employees. And it goes to pay for their health fund and those types of things, it saves them money. And it helps the county, you know, so then we can use those funds or use other funds elsewhere. So it's still there, the plan, if you recall, was for that fund to be depleted, or not depleted, but down to that level of about a million after seven years. And I think, uh, we probably would see this more based on the trend we're going, it might be eight or nine.
So they see each department determine how they spend those funds that want to go to them?
No, no, I wouldn't say that. It it's because it's coming from the health fund, it has to be used a certain way, but each department has to pay for the health of their employees. Right, so it kind of goes that way, but it saves their money elsewhere, right? So they can, they have money that that they would normally spend on healthcare, it's being used here, then they have funds to apply elsewhere, like salary.
Yeah, I get it.
Okay.
So can, is there, can we draw this down by charging employees less for their healthcare with that?
Yeah, you know, what we've done. Is because it's about an eighty-twenty split, that fund is about eighty percent money that the county pays in, about twenty. Uh, you know, it's really from employees deductions and those types of things. We have done things like increase their health benefit, you know, orthodontia. Different types of coverage, better coverage, less premiums, less deductible. We have an increased premium, so we're giving our share to the employees in that way. And then the other fund, the eighty percent, we're using it, you know, for the county benefit. Okay. Okay, next, oh no, here we go. So the key takeaway. The good news is, we have a balanced budget. Yep, things like higher equalized value, but a lowest lower mill rate, that's good, so taxes we expect to be relatively flat in the county. Uh, we did have a modest increase in our levy because of the net new construction mostly. F T Es are down, uh, which is good in the long run. And then, uh, spendable general fund balance is about four point seven million dollars. That is something that, you know, if you see priorities you can spend on. Uh, I do have some recommended expenditures that have come to me that I look at and say, hey, it fits within our priorities, it's an important thing we talked about before. And I've gone ahead and approved those. Okay, next page. Capital project. Oh.
Yes, now we lost the slide.
Oh, this is. Yeah, that's what I did. Is this the five-year capital improvement plan?
Yeah.
Do you have the five-year capital? Okay, you got it right there, good. So it's not up here, it's too small anyway, so, good call there, Dan. You will see, I'll just point something out, two thousand twenty-three, and again, if a capital improvement plan. The only year that's really accurate is that first year, right? Because that's what we're looking at spending this year. The future may or may not be complete, you may not have a good idea of what the costs are, because we really focus on this year. But you'll see there that the total revenues and expenditures, uh, or how we're gonna spend that is five point one million dollars. This is the point of reference, last year it was sixteen million. A lot of that's because of that eight million, eight point two million that we financed. Uh, and, and the building that we're remodeling over there, it would also include, uh, you know, other projects. Like the dam, the two million dollars in there, so, uh. Again, getting back to when I talked to the directors, when we said, what type of budget are we gonna have? We're pushing caution this year, slowing down, tapping the brakes a little bit. To make sure that we're only going after what we really need. Yeah. When you say that this is the most accurate, are, can we assume that these A through F on here? The departments and everybody have sort of itemized, you've got, you have those specific dollars tied to specific improvement. Yes, those are projected costs, or that's what's been approved by committee or the board to say that we'll spend it. And the plan, you know, those future years are useful because it keeps in our mind, hey, don't forget, in three years, we've got this two million dollar expense coming up, you know. And it's there, so it kind of gives us, uh, an idea, and it helps us in next year.
Can I interject? Yeah, so in the big thick graph, budget, about a third of the way back is the capital improvement plan, which. The last two meetings of general government, maybe we've seen a graph, this is, yeah, again, refined.
Additional funding request. Two things, I'm gonna show you the ones that I have provisionally agreed to. And, and certainly you can critique or whatever, and then we'll show you, uh, the things that have been discussed and bandied about amongst you before, there are topics that keep coming up. And it's an opportunity for you all to, to have your pick as to what you think are a priority. And you have hard topics, the first one. The blue one is the provisionally approved. Okay. So these are things, and you know, just. Give you an idea, uh, the first one, it's not a big one, but it's, uh, it's certainly something that I know Bob has decided about, it's a mapping software. Uh, for our zoning folks, uh, and makes a lot of sense. The treasurer, uh, she needs to upgrade her software to be in communication with the state. So that's something that, that I would highly recommend. The third one there, the clerical support staff for corporation council, I've mentioned that earlier. And you can see, excuse me, the cost. The budget cost, and then what fund, so those first three like are out of the general fund. Uh, the next two, uh, from IT. And, you know, Scott Good has been doing a great job, I, I mean, I just want you to know that we, he does a great job of keeping us safe, keeping our network safe. Making sure that our equipment is updated, uh, and I tell you what, he's really advancing our abilities to work in today's world. And, uh. New servers, network switches, those are things that, you know, have to be done over time. And we're gonna charge that to the asset recovery fund. And it's called, that is a fund we have established, uh, like the couple million, one point two million dollars. But what it is, it's like, as Don calls it, a family loan. So that money comes out of the asset recovery fund. But because IT is used by every department in the county. They pay back over time, that loan that they got from the asset protection fund. So really, it's a way for us to just use our own funds and get paid back, and it does not, uh, cost the taxpayer any extra money. But you can go down that list. Deferred maintenance projects, you'll see in here for facilities and here for parks. You know, we've talked about this, and we're really, really committed to this because, uh, you know, that's why Mo wanted to stick around and enjoy this. He has a lot of demands placed on him to repair building, equipment, or whatever. And now we've designed this great park system and these trails and these parks, oh yeah, we gotta maintain them too. So we're starting to create a fund there where he will have a year after year fund. So he doesn't have to come beg for me, you know, all, all the time, or from you, hey, I need to repair the windows over in the justice center. You know, this is something that if it meets the criteria, he can do. The generators, this is one that I've actually, one that, uh. Well, you'll see here, they, the sheriff's department requested three for communications towers. We thought rather than pay it all at once, maybe we can divide those three generators over time, spread them out a little bit. But you'll see in, in an additional, something you can decide on, and you'll have the flexibility to say, hey, let's buy all three at once, you know. But, but we, our thought is, let's do one this year, one next year, one the following year. Cause they are getting toward their end of life, but they're all functioning. New canine. Uh, DD Kennedy pedestrian bridge, if you recall. Uh, this has been a couple of years, we looked at that bridge, and if you've been at the DD Kennedy, there's a walking bridge that connects. The park, right, you got trails here and you got trailer there, but if you wanna connect to them, you gotta walk over the stream and the lake.
Tracy's an expert on this.
Okay. And we thought at first, could we repair it? But, uh, you know, Mo and people have looked at it, and it's like, it's crooked, you're leaning sideways, is that what happened to you, Tracy?
He holes for me, thank you.
So, uh, and DD Kennedy is kind of the flagship of our parks, I mean, it's a beautiful, silly, we're investing in it, playground, uh, buildings.
Is there grants for that though? Is there something?
You know, you know, is that, what, any grants will be thrown forward?
So we looked into the grants with DNR, and it does not meet the criteria for a grant. Uh, we tried, uh, last time to get a grant for it, would never reach a threshold for it. Um, DNR's response was, it would be a very, very slim margin if we ever get it. But we'd have to wait another year to see if we get the money, and the chances are, we would not.
I would put a snowmobile on it, they would.
Well, they drove a car across it somewhere, didn't they?
Um, I'll point out this last one, cause you know, it's good steer, you know, and. Sometimes you like to go down and say, ah, why are you buying that, you know? What's interesting, I, of course, I did that to Mo, I kind of, hey, Mo, why you, why you spending on it, it's here. We're paying more than that on renting now, because of our parks and trails and so on, so we're renting equipment. So we can get this, and so I provisionally approved it, uh, out of the general. So now, I, and I don't know if any of you recall last year, but this list is considerably smaller, I think the director's did a good job of whittling, whittling this down. The next page. Oh. Oh my gosh, forgive me. The, the one you've all been waiting to hear about was the mobile command center. Funny how I just skipped right over that. This one has caught a lot of interest. And, and as it should, and I've talked to the sheriff and with Don, and we need some type of vehicle, we need a unit, we need something that in those times of need we have. We've also found, uh, with COVID, we've learned that other divisions could use us as well, as Tanya's division, community services has done it. Uh, to help folks receive healthcare and so on. A lot of proposals, ideas bouncing up, we really did ask, you know, Don did a good job, Don Burrows. You go take a look at what are all the options, and the sheriff said, we gotta get all these options, we can't just go from having one that we think needs repair to getting a new one. So we looked at a variety of options, we looked at taking the one we have. And saying, what is it that it needs, and what is it that we want, that would make this thing really excellent? We then said, okay, instead of using ours, what if we found another one that someone turned in, and, and a manufacturer dressed it up and, and made it to our, our, our liking? And looked at that cost, it was a little bit more money. We then said, do we really need a big bus-type vehicle, could we go with a, a trailer and a truck, and what would that cost? But that was a little more expensive. And then we looked at, excuse me, the new version, which was the one that we'd gotten a bid at like five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Tanya, I, Don went for a ride in it, we looked at it, we have under seven thousand miles on our current vehicle. It is outdated, it's got some things wrong with it, but we broke out, Don broke out all the things that had to be repaired, like the generator and some other things on it. And I think the estimate now is like under a hundred thousand dollars, however. This is not something that we just wanna have running down the road, but we thought we, we need to replace some other things like the, uh. Come out, wanted to remodel it, because it's got a, a really unused restroom inside of it, we could take that out and make space, we could increase the size of a meeting room. And we looked at it and said. Let's budget two hundred thousand dollars, so we can have that thing looking extremely good and being very functional, something we'd all be proud of. So my recommendation was to take two hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to start the repair work. You know, it's running now, under seven thousand miles, uh, so the engine is in great shape. Uh, probably needs some tubes and things replaced, but I think between the two divisions, if we drove it on occasion more than we have in the past, I think we can keep that thing good for at least ten years. So that was my recommendation. You'll see an option for you all later, if you wanna do more, that will be up to you. Okay, thank you. Next. These are the things that have been discussed, bandied about, where you may say, uh. You know, we kind of give the menu for you to say, which of these will be live, and so on. First up there is the fair, now, the fair, I think we have budgeted at about fifty-eight thousand dollars, which, similar to what we've done last year for this current year and the year before. But these are additional items that, uh, we could do. Roots, uh, a PA system, and a cooler, I'm assuming, Mo, that's the big refrigerator-type cooler. Uh, for sixty-eight thousand dollars.
And like, that includes electrical and freezing. It doesn't say it on there, but if you look at the actual capital improvement plan, it's on there for sixty of those.
Thank you. And that's on top of what you've already allocated, correct? Yes, fifty-eight thousand. Also, facilities museum, if you recall, we, uh. Projected about a hundred and eighty thousand for the bell tower to redo that, uh, at the museum downtown here. The bids have come in lower than that, you know, like a hundred and twenty or so, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty. So we thought, one option would be to use the leftover funds for, uh, the windows and to, uh, remediate the cold room.
Cause those funds already came out of, those funds are already allocated from ARPA funds, that hundred and eighty thousand. And, and does that, is that windows and remediate the cold room, or does that include the vestibule thing too?
Should include the vestibule.
Yeah. Yeah, cause the, on the capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-three, it's the removed cold room and twenty-eight thousand for the, the vestibule on the north side. Um, the windows, um, we, that, that's part of the, uh, bell tower. Right, you know, the windows are for the bell tower, that's part of that bell tower renovation, so I don't know if that's already. Funds that have been allocated.
Well, I, I don't, the funds are in the general fund right now, so when we got the bid that came in lower. You know, the question is, well, we, we don't automatically just say, oh, here's some.
I know that, no, I know that. But, so this should say. This doesn't include, it includes windows and remediate cold room. I, and I don't know if fifty-eight thousand is the right number for that, but fifty-eight thousand is the right number for remove cold room and vestibule on the capital improvement plan.
Thirty-two for the windows was not added to the list, we're waiting whether to add it to the CIP or use it on a fund.
Oh, okay. Well, somewhere that has to be, that thirty-two thousand should show up somewhere.
We can add that.
That's for the window.
If, if you wanted, you all choose to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just along following, is that fifty-eight thousand? So the hundred and eighty that was allocated from ARPA funds to the bell tower project, are we not looking at that as a hundred and eighty, we're looking at that as a hundred and ten or whatever it is?
Now we're looking at what the actual cost is, so that money, cause all that ARPA fund has been, it's just sitting in our general, it's just there. Now we're earmarking it so that we kind of know this was money that was given to us. And, and I, some of you have said, hey, I wanna know what, what, what is there from that?
This, this just isn't in addition to that, this is basically saying like.
Right.
And we didn't know about the window bid until, for the bell tower, until later. So that's why that wasn't part of the original ask, because we didn't, we thought it was gonna be a hundred and eighty just for the structural stuff.
I included in here, um, per the resolution that we did not discuss. The, uh, the one point five million for senior housing, uh, and that proposal. And Malia, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's something that they could still vote in to this budget. Oh, the next one, if you recall, Mo made presentations and talked a little about. An enhanced roof on this building, we're due for a new roof here. And I think, uh, the added cost is five hundred thousand dollars, I did not put it in the budget. Uh, it takes it from a twenty-five-year warranty to like a forty-year warranty, I think, something like that. My feeling is five hundred thousand is a lot of money. Maybe not to Jay, but for us it is, and, uh, no, it, it's serious, this, we just thought. We think the twenty-five-year warranty might be good, the forty-year, yeah, you might get a better material or something, it may have some repairs you gotta do once in a while on the other one. But we don't know exactly what this building's gonna be like for you.
What was the total cost anyway, two and a half?
The original one and a half?
Two point one. Payback. Over the years would have been, remember, this one.
Appointed maintenance or?
Appointed maintenance and the longevity of the roof lasting that much longer without an extra roof repair, um, twenty years down the line.
The, uh, generators, I mentioned the generators for the communication power. Uh, the original request was for three, we did one, we'll do one the next couple of years, the only thought here is. When you think inflation, whatever, would it make sense, you know, if we see. You know, whoa, the prices are gonna double in the next year, well, do we go ahead and buy it? So I put that on here as a, an option if, you know, if we wanted to spend that money. And then what I call the enhanced mobile command center, well, I budgeted two hundred thousand. If, uh, this group said, hey, I think we should go for a different version, it would be up to an additional three hundred and eighty thousand. Now. On the horizon, I put down at the bottom here. Again, just as a reminder, while the money's there now, and we can look at that and say, jeez, we got four point seven million, we could buy all those things there and go home and be done with it. But I again say, keep in mind, you're gonna have new priorities in May. We also know the recycling center upgrade, which we, from ARPA funds, we allocated one point six two million dollars. That will do some things, but it won't necessarily get us where we wanna be on recycling. Uh, we're, we have not done a business plan yet on that, but we are getting a consultant, and they're recommending probably another one point six million or so, right, Mo? So uh, that may be something that down the road, you may decide, let's do that. Also, I throw in campus improvement. There are things that need to be done. We know coming up here pretty soon, like the repaving of the parking lot. Fix those cracks about as long as we can. It's now getting to the point where pretty soon we're going to have to redo that parking lot.
It really needs a.
There's been brought up that uh, there could be a solution for snow covered fleet cars. You know, a parking garage or parking uh, ports. The old jail, what do we do with that? Do we need to demolish it? Use it for storage? You know, could we do, and one of the things we talked about too is enhancing the overall campus, so to speak. Uh, you know, when you look at what the young people look for in a place of employment, you know, they want to be able to move around. They want to have a sense they're on a campus or whatever. So might be some things we can do. We even talked about, you know, having a lunch pavilion or a patio. Wouldn't be real offensive, but out to the side of the building that people go out, either have a meeting or have a lunch or something outside. Those are the types of things to do it. And of course. You know, we talked about the sports complex, if and even somewhere down the road, we want to invest in that. That's just the things right off the top of my head where we said, we may have some future projects that could be expensive. The fair, the, the grandstand, you know, those types of things may come up. So. Keep that in mind when you look at your menu here and say, this is what, you know, we should do.
I got a question. Um. I can't remember, how much was of the ARPA funds allocated towards um, internet with Lakeland?
One point. One million.
Okay, and was there, I had heard through talking to somebody at Lakeland, is there any truth to the possibility that that's coming back to us?
That it never left us for one.
Uh, what I mean, as far as how we've got earmarked is allocated.
Right, probably uh, very shortly, if not this year, early next year, we will probably recommend either a change in that resolution on how those funds are to be used, or we can reallocate those funds. Now. We've made great progress on broadband. Uh, I mean, our county. Our mapping that we did set up where areas of biggest need, and then we got those areas of biggest need addressed through a grant process. I'll say that part of the reason we had success with the grant process, or Lakeland did. Is because of the partnership that we demonstrated by saying, we'll contribute up to this much money to help in that. Lakeland has said. Thank you. Your support helped. We got the grant. We may not, we don't necessarily need that money. Not that they don't need it, they'd like it. But the five hundred foot drop that, that, that we put in the resolution, that they had to pay after five hundred feet drop. They said make the cost prohibitive. Their feeling was that it would cost more than what they received. Now. If you talk to your neighbors though, or if you talk to people about their broadband or their internet, they'll say, I don't have it, I can't get it. That's because we got the main lines out there, but there's still a lot of people that maybe the road over there has it, but their road doesn't. So the next step may be, can we change that resolution? That would encourage not just Lakeland, but the small, Starwater, Amoryville, and all these others. To do kind of the edging out into those neighborhoods that are close but don't have it, so that we could get complete coverage sooner rather than later.
Lakeland won't even give people bids to bring it off the main roads into their home. You can't even give them a bid. They're dropping it more down, not too far from our house. They're doing it right now. Can't even get a bid from them to bring it into our roads.
So the point being though, I, I see your point. Right now, that million dollars is not being spent. We can still alter it and incent internet service providers with that money to get more people covered, or we could change. Change the usage of it altogether.
Do we know, is the state giving out more grants down the road just coming here? Do we know?
There are some grants, I think I just saw, but I don't know to what extent or how.
Fairly, because only twenty-three thousand dollars.
So. With that, you can ask questions, you can look at the uh, menu items on there. If you have any concerns or recommendations, now's the time to, to hash them out.
What was the number on the recycling center again? Over the one point six was a one point eight, Mo? Earlier, it was one point five, one point five. Over the one point six, right?
Right. And that was to do it the way you originally envisioned.
Correct, what they recommended for capacity, right.
And I mean, we addressed that back when you addressed fifty-four twenty-one. Basically said that, you know, we're going to do what's necessary and reasonable to upgrade the facility, ensure that the success of the service for all of the county. Improvement is here for county, so. We committed that in a resolution. That's why I have a hard time understanding how it got down there. And all of a sudden, one point five million for senior housing got up there.
Yeah.
That confuses me because we all know what the number was, one point five. I think we toured it, you might fear that.
I, I will be glad to share what I saw. So I asked Mo, give me a tour, um, because you can't vote on something unless you toured the facility. For anybody who has not toured that facility, I strongly suggest you take a tour. The people that are working there deserve better. It's horrible. Literally horrible. We owe it to those people to make a better facility. I'm just saying. I left there angry. Makes you sick, literally.
I totally agree with you.
I don't know how they do it every day. They come to work, they do the job. They don't deserve that. We're lucky to have them.
And it's, it's, the whole thing is an ice sword. When you come into the county, you drag down the median highway age, and it's awful, the whole thing.
My question is, any of this taking any of our overrun? Because we already know we're going two hundred and forty-six over on the building right now. Uh, is there any other overruns? Does Mo have some of the vehicles? Uh, did we, are we budgeting up a couple of dollars a gallon for fuel? That isn't going to come down. For snow removal and stuff, is that in here already? Is that built in?
Yeah, and, and Mo projected budgets for equipment, so on those, costs of those items.
What about the ones this year, but they go over too?
Well, did we, I don't know what we're getting this year, but.
In any of those, I thought he got a couple of.
You mean in twenty twenty-two, yeah.
Yeah. So. Those overruns are.
Right, so the overrun of the building, which now we're projecting two hundred and forty-six thousand. We do have a couple of fleet cars coming in. Are they over?
Probably not over. Um, the highway over just for that heavy equipment and trucks. Um, I won't know the over under that until I see my revenues at the end of the year, um, whether I can cover those costs or not. Um, actually, the, the Cosma truck is, is up significantly from last, uh, twenty twenty-one. Um, but we're just, um, we won't, we just uh, received the chassis from twenty twenty-one building those trucks. So we're about eighteen months on a truck.
Of fuel, what did that do to you? But thirty percent of the fuel part?
Fuels is, um, fuel is calculated as an inventory item. I don't, I don't have a line item, but I just buy fuel and increase that line item. Um, it's based off of, um, when we, when we do work for others and ourselves, we charge ourselves equipment rate. That rate is changed quarterly if fuel moves two percent or more. So in theory, you're supposed to recover that fuel cost back with your charges back from equipment. Um, but there's a lag in that. So it's done every quarter. So if it jumps over two percent, the state adjusts those rates and get that money back. Um, so we try to maintain, um, again, the caveat on that naturally is how secure our winter is going to be. With a light winter pushing less snow, we'll have less fuel costs. The average highway, about a hundred and ten thousand gallons of uh, diesel a year. So when that moves three, four dollars, it's a big impact. Um, but if we count on that uh, equipment rate, we can try to recover some of that. And again, we won't know those costs until April, when we're closing our books to see how our revenues came in, um, on our equipment.
I have a question on, uh, back on the investing in our team totally rewards thing. So on this one that says rewarding increased um, responsibility pay grade with seven employees, does that, seven employees? Um, I don't know if that kind of stated in all levels of the organization, not just like manager, that's like.
Oh, no, what?
Entry and.
Yeah, it was all different from ring, yeah.
And then the other question I have is sort of conceptual on this, when we're talking about, hey, and are we, are we making sure that we're bringing everybody up at the same? Or are we bringing whatever?
Yeah.
Some people up faster than others, and then, then we have these people down here that are coming along later.
That, it, it's a couple of things. The philosophy of the pay in the past has been, uh, everybody gets the same rate. Okay, moving forward, till you get a certain part, get up to a certain point above your, you know, up in the upper echelons of your range of that job. And then you don't get the merit increase, then you just get the cost of living increase. So there is a limit. So I know, uh. One thing that has been suggested, because you might have a young person that's very good in their, not young, but say newer person, very good in their job. And they don't, uh, they're not making nearly as much as someone who's been in the job for twenty years. Now, some would say that's good reason for that, and others may say, hey, if they're doing the same job, should they be closer? So there are some things that, that we will consider for next year. Uh, to say, you know. Instead of that two percent merit, maybe the people high up in the range. Uh, only get a one point seven percent merit, and those down in the lower hands, they're doing a good job to get two point three percent. So there are some things we can do. We're not ready to do that yet. Uh, one of the things that this commit board asked us to do last year was to develop a uh. Bonus structure, a performance award. It's a way to recognize those top performers and get more money regardless of, of their job or their uh, experience or whatever. And we've been working on that. However, what we found was that we are not ready to do that until we have a good performance appraisal system in place. Something that, and, and we coach our folks that we can differentiate performers and can probably say and, and boast about to our colleagues. This person deserves more because they did the absolute best. And to do that, we got to have a performance appraisal where we're, we're differentiating people uh, specifically so that we can, we can do that. So there are a couple of ways we're going to address that. One may be that reverse uh, merit increase system. Uh, but part of it will be based on merit at some point.
I just want to make sure that we're rewarding the people who are only here three to five, seven, even ten years, making sure that they stay with them.
Yeah, and you know, again, that's why we also look at uh, comparatives. And in many cases, we feel, we felt very good about our pay compared to other counties, other types of stuff. We got to compete against other types of businesses as well. You lose people, but uh, you know, part of our job is to make sure we stay ahead of the curve.
But part of this will fold into that job study that we're going to do.
Yeah, that wage study will clearly define where we're low and where we're high.
And then some folks have expanded responsibilities.
Yeah, that's those uh, seven people who got the rate. They, you know, they maybe took on some uh, management responsibilities. They've got an office where they're in charge, where their experience has made them, you're in charge of all these people here, so.
And there's a complaint.
That's right.
Anybody else? Right, so realistically, I think you said there's about four point seven two million that's room to play with above the fifty percent. So the two hundred and forty-six thousand that we're budget, that we're thinking we're over on building. Is that quarter of a million going to lower that number? When that gets paid, because this is what we have, and if we're, we're two hundred and fifty thousand over on the, on the building project, we're really only looking at four and a half million dollars, because that two hundred and forty-seven thousand is going to have to come from the general fund. No different than if Mo is over on highway. And if any other department is over anywhere, that's going to come out of this four point seven million, realistically, before we spend any of it anywhere else. It's going to cover the overages of twenty twenty-two, regardless of what department it is.
That will probably be paid yes in two thousand twenty-three.
Right. All right. Anyone else, or you want to call me on my error? Error is the fact that I didn't do the resolution.
Oh, yeah. You skipped one. Skip number eight.
I'm going to get caught on that immediately, but that was on purpose.
Well, it was, it's.
And I, I thought you made an amendment.
I think he did his own personal amendment. Okay.
On um, uh, it has to do with the personnel. So when I'm looking at, for instance, I, I grab like land management or land information, and I'm looking now at expenditures personnel. The personnel, that, that is that the wage and benefit? Mine, or, or, or is the benefit, um, under, under the professional?
No, that would cover wage and benefit.
Wage and benefit, right? And then professional, there's that, they're not on everything.
Consultants.
Okay.
Engineers.
Haring engineers, okay, great. Uh, supplies and expenses, I'm, I guess I, like, um. So do we, do we do like, uh, any? You know, professional conferences or?
Yes, each of the directors may include that in their budget to say, we want to develop our, you know, send our certain number of people. Yeah, we do. We still, by the way, the uh. Included, we started it last year, was the tuition assistance program. And we budgeted seventy-five thousand last year. We did not spend that much. We've actually lowered that this year. But we did have several employees take advantage of it, and we feel good about they're getting it in degrees that are relevant to their jobs or expanding their opportunities. So we think it's a good investment.
So those are discretionary funding that is controlled by the department heads?
Discretionary. There's no slash fund.
Well, I, I didn't say that, but it should have got in my head. Because I just don't see, I don't see where that.
Yeah.
Back to follow it on here.
Yeah, I, I think uh, it, it, it's in there somewhere where they're, you know. You know, I have a contingency fund, whatever's left over. And, and I've used it in the past where an issue comes up, let's say uh. The trail in Sterling, or the ATV, UTV. If, if something came up quickly and said, hey, we gotta have somebody go out there and draw a path for us. In my contingency fund, I could say, hey, I've got enough money. It's within the certain guidelines of how much I can spend. I could hire a consultant to go out or do an R and P and pay him to go out.
That's always been.
And do that, yeah. So that's just the money that, that I.
Sure, got one more question.
Right.
Since when do we, when do we trash out the amount?
Right now?
This is it.
Yeah.
We got to do this tonight.
Right. You, if you see something that you want to pay for, or if you see something you don't want to pay for now, so I can do it. Because the changes you make here tonight, we insert into these, this document, we retype everything. Read and put everything, I get going my age. And uh, and then that is what gets published, and we have a public hearing on it next month.
Will we entertain motions for changes now?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we uh, fully fund the recycling center with point one, point five million dollars. Complete the project. Just like I was telling my fellow board members, you can't believe the way we've seen stuff happen.
And you come back to it all the time.
So I'd like to make a motion that we take one point five million of the general fund, which should be ARPA funds, will be available, correct me if I'm wrong.
ARPA funds are available for that as well. And yeah, it it's basically general fund, but we put an asterisk by a certain.
Yeah, so that's that's included in my motion, but that's not good. I'm out of the general fund, being being out of ARPA.
And motion?
What's that?
Any more discussion, honor?
I'm going to ask, is that, was that in our uh resolution already though too?
Uh, the one that I read?
Yeah.
It just said in the resolution that uh. The boy had read, whereas apple improvements, maintenance improvements could be. Made using first uh undesigned funds uh without impacting the county tax. And there then it goes therefore, you know, we commit, supervisors commit the UNC ARPA fund for the necessary and reasonable upgrades. The recycling center. I mean, we didn't realize what the cost was going to be when we put the one point six two in there.
The first.
But now we know what it's going to be and it's right here. We told the people that's what we're going to.
You know, I it's a little fuzzy though, additional one point five. Right now, we're in the early stages. We haven't. You know, this is what they're projecting, so obviously it could be a little higher, it could be a little lower.
I don't know if I can roll that all into one motion, but I mean, generally, that's going to get us where we have the right volumes restored and all of that.
Should be building up and talked about.
Can you just have a not not to exceed number?
That wouldn't work, right?
Yeah, I just put one point five. I don't know what they.
That's got to be all number.
And all we can do is go by what Mo's research. You know, and he's control now with people and they've given these numbers and that.
So you're comfortable with that, Mo, that between the one point six two and the one point five, that's going to take care of it pretty much?
So it gets to go and expand it to what we need, yeah.
A new sign out front? Katie said she'd do it for free.
If you carry call for your question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All the same side. Any more? Anybody else?
Just in case, I just want to clarify, so only you said earlier that with regard to the senior housing resolution that. That was essentially. Dead as a result of that vote. Is that after tonight and this is the opportunity?
This is your opportunity.
Okay, and then if not tonight?
Right, because that other resolution would never come back. That resolution was really just formalizing a vote if somebody were to make a motion like this. Different resolution from that.
Right.
While you're thinking about that, can I just ask a question a minute? Okay, can we go back to the command center? So for two hundred thousand dollars, are we getting something that all the directors say works for their needs?
Yeah, well, the the two directors.
Remodeling the existing.
Yeah, the two directors that went through it, you know, and and they they expressed to me, yeah, I agree with this, can we change this and? And but the first nine hundred thousand was simply the mechanical stuff. Two zero. Um, and yeah, I think I think we will have a very fine command center. Yeah.
With vintage license plate. Yeah.
I think we can do that.
Go ahead.
So I'd like to make change the motion to uh. I would like to move the air facilities, the roof, the cooler, the PA and and I think electrical was included. Uh, I would like to move that, that we do that, put it on.
The fair one?
The fair one, fine. Sixty.
So how do we do this? I second your motion. We're not, I do.
Just a little feedback on that. You know, the PA system warns everybody if there's a storm coming, they had it, they had it, they went through that here a couple of years ago. And it's not clear on the ground. I mean. You know, people aren't properly warned there. I mean, I think it's, I think it's well spent money on the PA end.
At the um, I don't know, the Wisconsin or the Polk County, what do they say that was coming in? For Polk County Tourism Conference. That fair came up as the county jewel, okay, so um in addition to PA for safety purposes. Um, you know, announcing events and stuff like that is important and. Um, and I I just, I just think it's a, it's just positive. All this, you know, you gotta feel good about spending money. This is the burning. Where it's going to increase tourism. It's already a jewel, so let's keep it that way, or make it that.
Thank you, Chair. On that electrical which you mentioned, I remember when uh. I was on about five years ago, uh electrical was done to a certain point. And then she wanted to do it farther, but it was kind of off right there. So that electrical, I mentioned that's in there, that's something that was already planned and now we can finally finish it. Vince, are you clear on what is there?
Don't keep in track.
It's what's right in the capital plan right here.
Yeah, it's it's listed in that.
But it's not all, it's not, that's not what we listed right there.
Separate, separate.
No, but it it isn't here. The number is right, it's just not saying everything.
So, go ahead.
Amy was talking about the command center. I just want to back up, but I I don't know where that ended between you and Vince, you never had a phone.
Yeah, what I was saying.
She, well, let's do this one first. Let's do the, do it in order.
Let's do the fair.
Yeah, I think we had a motion in a second and now we're discussing, or there was.
On the fair, yeah.
On the fair, right.
I'll go with that question.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All the same side.
Wanted to back up on the command center because I guess the only fear I have is I had a personal tour of the command center. And that seemed like a lot of repair that day. So I'm wondering if we don't go. Two hundred thousand is the repair of the command center, but I think we should go higher. It give a better option if needed.
That's kind of what was in there because he said that the bid that we currently had was around a hundred thousand.
That's what I'm trying to say, gold, that I wasn't sure Amy was talking about the two hundred repair.
Well, he Vince said the hundred thousand dollar was the bid for the repairing the current stuff. And then. He threw another hundred thousand to sort of offset it for what the director needed. So I think I'm comfortable with that. Give the report back.
With two hundred?
Yeah.
No motion?
I believe our chair, I believe our sheriff's department, Donna, is that what you agree to that we can be satisfactory?
And this is that we don't need to approve that, you know, since it's already.
Yeah.
He already did that.
Need it.
All right.
I'd like.
I'll make a motion to to do the generators. Uh, and I think that is two right there, sixty seven, because on the other one, it's thirty three each.
Right.
And the price is going up on those fast. The generator stuff, so I think we should buy the two, so I I would like to say on that line that we do the two. Issue for the sixty seven.
Well, so just, just to be clear, did you already say one on your?
Yeah.
And this would be the two additional, so we do all three?
Yeah.
And we do all three, so it's.
Right. So did you, was that a motion? I'm sorry.
That was a motion.
I'll second that.
All right. You want to repeat the motion?
Was to approve this line for the generator.
The additional?
For sixty seven thousand so that we'd have all two.
Get a second?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All the same thing.
Um, I'd like to add, uh, take motion additional ARC GIS license for the staff. That we support for sixteen hundred dollars. Where's that? No, that's.
Provisionally.
Other page, I'm sorry. I I'd like to make a motion on the museum. Um, the the bid that Mo got for the windows, that's part of that bell tower. Uh, I mean, they're going to do all that structural stuff if those windows don't get replaced, the structural stuff isn't going to last, the rain's going to keep coming in. And um and then remade, remediating the coal room and the other thing, a part of that. Sixty eight thousand was also building a vest of yule by the north entrance because you can stand by that north entrance door and the wind just. Comes right through, the snow comes right through, they tape it up, it still comes in there. And that's not one of the doors that's being replaced. That we got the part of that paid for. To do the the. Remove the coal room. And construct the vest of yule and then through the windows and the bell tower.
Total fifty eight?
Oh, total of eighty, because the fifty eight, the thirty two for the windows was was not included in here.
Or you want to include it to ninety?
Eighty.
Eighty.
Oh, no, it's ninety, ninety, ninety.
Right, Dr. Mo.
What was the tower initially? What did we allocate for that? One eighty and it came in about. We initially did allocate one eighty. And it the bid came in at one oh eight.
One oh eight?
One oh eight.
I would, I would second that, we're going along with what he said, we're doing things kind of half.
Prozo is thirty two plus, I mean, prozo is fifty eight plus thirty two thousand. Additional.
Could have done right.
Any more discussion on that?
Kind of a little. It's probably got straight in my mind. We did the bell tower for one eighty.
Correct.
And the bid came back at one oh, one oh eight, one oh eight. So the one eighty was already ARPA.
Yes.
So. Uh, I think this.
We don't need a resolution.
Well, I'm just trying to figure that out. The bid will cover all but how much?
Eighteen thousand. Eighteen thousand.
So assume this motion being increased, budget amount for the bell tower, eighteen thousand?
Well, I I would say no, and only because it would be, it almost seems a little too loose with the money. If if we set up to a hundred eighty thousand, the bid comes in at a hundred and eight. And so then somebody goes, oh, let's just spend the rest doing this. So I'd rather us be specific as to what we're bidding the money on.
Yeah.
Just seems to make sense.
Well, it's like Sharon said, I mean, when you when you go in. And they start tearing stuff apart, they can find things that need to be fixed. Because the fair polish it turd by adding a roof and not fixing the windows, which are root cause, yes. So I think I would be sure the window will be in with the. That means, no, not till they've, they're going to, they've got some work on the roof and gutters allocated in twenty twenty five. Otherwise, no, because they've they've done a good job keeping up with some of the interior stuff.
What's the um, what's the coal room, sorry?
Well, it used to, that's how they used to heat that building and that's where the coal came in.
Yep.
And they stored it and all it is, it just, water just comes in there all the time.
Oh, I see.
So it's it's causing humidity in that building, which is bad for the artifacts and stuff. And there, Mo had estimates on Donna, what's the best thing to do, try to fix. Water issue and we don't use it for anything, or do we just get rid of that part instead? Just a icky old room that nothing, it's not used for anything except to heat water, you know, because the water just comes.
And are we current and confident then with the fifty eight and the thirty two?
That your motion?
Yes.
Then I can please.
Yeah, yeah.
Any more discussion, honor? All in favor?
Aye.
All the same side. Okay. Yeah.
I would like to see the justice center roof improvement. That will give us the forty years right home.
Yes.
See, what will this building look like? You're excited, you know, I can't, you know, where are this building going to be at in forty years?
There can be some storm damage and and maybe, you know, there's always that possibility that if. The increase was insured or something, I I think our only five years of our operation.
What is it, Mo? About twenty years now?
The rubber membrane, membrane roof, it's twenty year.
Twenty.
Double.
Double.
Well. What's the motion?
I make a motion that we add that additional to give us the forty years.
What's the additional? Well, this one, okay.
When was this building built? We need a second to discuss.
Yeah.
Oh, black outside the door?
We got a motion to to uh. Accept this five hundred thousand dollar for the increase in the the roof. We have a second. Anybody want to discuss?
Well, just, I just, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm getting the clearest answer on if we put a forty thou, forty year roof. On this building, will this building still be something?
Exactly.
Right? I'm not sure. What is the answer to that, Mo? You know, you know what I'm saying? Can we, can we just stay with this building in forty years?
I guess, I guess the answer to that is we're just renovating a nineteen seventy four building. So I would say the chances of it lasting that long and I would hope the sheriff's department would still be here and pumping it ahead and shipping.
So forty years, twenty seventy. It's really sci fi, man.
Mo, do you remember off the top of your head the cost of the twenty year option?
Yeah.
Total?
The twenty year option?
Yeah, the membrane, uh, two point one. So it's two point one versus two point six for twice.
Correct.
Life, so I mean, return on investment as far as being prudent in that way. That would be the way to go because you're saving yourself.
And is it based on the the membrane thickness?
Correct. Multi-layered versus a single-layer membrane, subject to hail damage and other.
Remember all those details from that day?
It's no brain, I, it's coming back.
Any more discussion? All the questions? All in favor? Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
All the same side?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, happy.
Mr. Chair, I have another question. So, um, on the topic of the senior housing. So Health and Human Services have spent a lot of time talking about housing and the crisis of housing that we have right now in Polk County. And I don't know, I don't know this senior housing project, I I um. What I would love is if we had a number figured out. That we could somehow support it in this twenty three budget, some sort of. Can we put a placeholder in our budget for housing of some sort or? Um, or should we just put a, what's?
Or it may do as a priority. Give it as a priority, we do the priority, it should be a priority.
But if we recognize that it's a priority, then aren't we recognizing it's a priority now?
Not necessarily. We don't know if it will be that.
Right, so that's that's the part that we miss out, that's the part that we miss out on tonight is we get no discussion on it. out on tonight is we get no discussion on it.
I think we have an opportunity now to discuss it, I mean, at least for the, for us.
Is there anything we need to do procedurally to discuss it or?
No, it's, it's part of the.
On here.
Right.
Down here, so, I mean, I'd like to have some kind of presentation, but, you know, who's players here? I mean, are bankers involved, contractors involved, investor involved?
Mr. Chair, haven't you been going to meetings on yet?
We have been.
We have, I've.
What have been doing there?
So. The resolution was for your, you can't discuss.
So, I can give the high level on that. If.
Yes, please.
Yeah, um, so the resolution that was drafted comes from the EDC effort to address housing in general, so Terry from the EDC had told me, the director of EDC, told me that there had been a previous effort to address housing in a more general way and the feedback to him was that it needed to be a more targeted effort, so what he did is he came back with an effort to address senior housing with the idea that by, because we've identified that in Polk County, the availability for senior housing is at zero and the waitlist for the available senior housing is long, Chair, do you have something?
Yep, I do, um, and San Craig, that statement doesn't hold for some, all communities and San Craig Falls, as fast as they're building homes that seniors are buying, I mean, it's, they call it little cushing, one of the areas, because so many people have sold their farms and moved into the senior two-bedroom, two-bath, one-level homes and as fast as they're building them, they're selling them, so I, I have, that, that's the part, what I see, you know, when we say this, do you have staffs to support that claim, there's a lack of senior housing options?
Yes.
How do we know that?
Because we've got a study that was, been presented to us three different times in general government that shows the different senior housing facilities, their zero occupancy or their zero vacancy and the length of their waitlist, so and the thing that you just said, that as soon as things are being built, they're also being built, doesn't change the fact that what I just said, that, um, that there's no vacancy, doesn't change.
Private enterprise should take care of that.
Yes, yes.
Private management should try that.
Yeah.
In a perfect world, it would, except the developers have communicated that there's reasons that they're not building in our area, so like, yes, if, all of the things that we do in government should be taken care of by, in a perfect world, should be taken care of by private industry, but in the real world, they're not. So anyway, to go back to what was asked, and I'm sorry, I'll be more succinct with this then, is that what the, the involvement of the people who came together for the resolution was, we had discussions with several different builders, Derek Builders being the primary one, and Derek had conversations with other builders about what types of incentives would incent them to build in areas like the municipalities in Polk County, in the mill towns and Balsam Lakes of the world, where they otherwise wouldn't, where they otherwise wouldn't because of proximity to, you know, uh, medical facilities, like any number of reasons why they don't choose to build in these places, we were trying to figure out how to incent them to build here, and so we worked with developers and then we also worked with lenders and worked with, um, West Central Regional Planning to talk about the implementation of a program like that, um, worked with some real estate involved people, so we had a number of stakeholders that were involved in coming up with the plan, uh, that's how the program got put together and we got to where we were.
So what would the one point five get us?
One point five would get us the fund that would be made available to developers to apply, um, for up to ten thousand dollars per unit, up to four hundred thousand per bill.
So potentially could be three builders would get all, most of the money.
Right.
And, and West Central, Wisconsin Regional Planning has agreed that they could manage the fund and I'm on that commission, so out of, if you're, if they're managing, like when they managed the Main Street Bounce That Program, they started out with one point five two million, five million and sixty, they charged sixty thousand to administer that, so out of, if they did the same thing, I would think for this program it'd be similar, so there'd be one point four four million available, um, so that potentially could, you know, it gets, half of that gets paid back, cause they get ten thousand dollars, but half of it gets paid back and so they're really only getting five thousand dollars and they have ten years to pay it back, so the county at the most would get seventy two thousand a year for ten years if all that one point four million was actually, you know, it was gone and, and, and then my concern was, if, because it can be rentals, they can build rentals and then rent them, well, that happened in Centuria, um, I know you don't like to hear that.
We've already discussed that.
Yes, but this, this group hasn't heard that.
No, we've already discussed the solution to that.
Well, I don't, I haven't heard of a solution yet that makes sense, um, you know, there's, uh, they, they build rentals, Impact Seven built rentals and, not for seniors, but for anybody, and, um, and then they changed the rules around, around five oh one C threes and it's easier now to get approved for five oh one C three, so they became a five oh one C three, all the tax base is gone in Centuria for all that Impact Seven housing and not only Centuria, but all through the state, off, through the state of Wisconsin, some of the cities like Racine lost over two million dollars in taxes, um, cause they still have to pay for fire, um, police protection, all of that, all of services still have to be provided to the people even though they're not getting any taxes back, so there's no, there's no guarantee that's gonna, what's gonna stop them from becoming a five oh one C three after the fact, and then how do you determine the effectiveness? Will you be tracking each unit built, how do you know, what we really need is housing for workers to come here, that's what we're ultimately about, right?
Affordable.
Affordable housing, this doesn't get us, this, we're talking now, this be, it, it's not affordable housing now, it's housing for seniors, so the seniors with the thought being, seniors are gonna sell their homes and then young couples are gonna come in and wanna work, live and work in this community, well, how many young couples can come in and buy a, the same house that a senior worked their whole life to get, they aren't gonna be able to afford those houses, so are we looking to bring more seniors into the county or are we looking to bring more workers into the county?
Frustrating part about that is, is that again, we've addressed that not everybody has an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar home that they're selling and we've done the studies and we have shown that at our last Gen Gov meeting, it's a little bit frustrating because all of these things were addressed directly, where we gave three different core examples of the types of homes that have been made available by people who have raised their hand and said, I would sell my home, the highest of which was at three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and that was at the peak of home valuations in the last few months and we did the math on, uh, talking about average or median, medium income of households in the county with couples, for example, and the math works out where they can afford that level of home, so yes, when you're talking about people who all of a sudden have a million dollar house, no, that's also not the target of this program. So, where we're at, I feel like we can see that there are questions, doubts, what have you, about what's going on, my question would be, is, I, starting way back at the beginning, because I jumped into the middle of this pro, process with EDC and jumped on board with what was going on there and I can see where the board is at, so I'm kinda playing the conduit between EDC and the county board, so my question would be, does the county board recognize housing as an issue when it comes to available workforce with attracting and retaining people living and working in Polk County? Is that something that we see as a problem that we want to address and is something in housing, whether it be senior housing or another effort, what we want to do to address that problem and if so, how can we take what we just talked about or something completely new and create something that addresses the problem? Or is it that we don't think, or is it that this group thinks that housing is not an issue and it's not something that we need to tackle in the foreseeable future?
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm on the, the Polk County Housing Authority and, uh, we have a meeting once a month over at the Balsam Lake Partners here, so everybody's welcome, it's, uh, Thursday, every month at nine o'clock and, uh, I, I asked our, our administrator, Jennifer Cockroft at the last meeting, uh, about the availability, the waiting list or whatever, and we have nine units in the county at, uh, Mill Town or, 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 like, uh, yeah, I think one of them, I think they're in eight communities, one of them has two, and I said, how big a waiting list you have, and she said, we have a waiting list in all of, for all our units, and she said, some of them, some of them, there're probably ten, uh, but they're waiting list in all, I said, do you think that will, as a Polk County housing unit, will ever expand? And she said, there, there isn't any talk about it because of, of lack of money.
Now, that's low-income housing, right? Polk County housing.
Yeah, yes.
I agree, we need, we need worker housing.
So my thought is, why do we, for demographic, why do we do just senior, why not housing?
So what I was told.
We're trying to take and just take one, why not take every month?
So.
Because, so you should do that in a neighborhood or anything, they want.
Chair, I just wanna direct, you're kinda getting into a very large philosophical discussion and bring it back to the budget, if you're not going, if nobody's going to make a motion to include something about this in the budget, I think what you can say is this is a topic to continue a discussion on, maybe have a presentation to the full board, nothing would, would stop you from in the future with the two-thirds majority amending a budget if you found that there's a really awesome program out there, but I, I just, the whole philosophical isn't really on the agenda, just whether or not you're gonna do something in the budget.
Well, what, okay, what has happened is, San Craig Falls did that, they tried to just do specific.
Try that again? Maybe again?
I was saying about. And I'm not gonna do it.
All right.
I was gonna keep it.
Do you have any other questions that wanna be addressed?
Do you know we're at two point two two five?
Tell it all the other.
Yeah. So we're right. We said we had four point two five, so it's.
It's expanded, that's what you're saying.
Anybody else have something they wanna?
I just, I do.
Got a credit card.
So the demolition of that old jail, does it need to be destroyed and couldn't it be used for, for something, I, I don't know, I don't know. For the vehicles or the?
Senior level?
No, or like the, his, other cafeteria, you know, I creatively thinking of how you can.
Those items are.
You can make a motion, I know there, make more down here.
That's just to keep in mind for the future as you decide how much.
Him and Josh credit cards, we're moving on.
Russ, get us on track.
Anybody else wanted to, to, uh?
Cards cut, we're moving on. Then going back to the resolution.
Are there any more?
No.
All right, we're going on to Resolution forty-five twenty-two, again a motion.
Oh.
Second.
That would be.
Any question on this, any discussion?
Does the motion include all the changes?
Right.
That were just made?
Correct.
Right. Both specifications.
More discussion, question, all in favor?
Aye.
Same sign, Resolution forty-four twenty-two.
This resolution is a lobbying resolution, it is recommended from Environmental Services Committee that deals with tax deed foreclosures, it is also recommended by the Wisconsin Counties Association Attorney in general in concept, and it's also recommended by the treasurer, uh, County Treasurers Association and our treasurer, Amanda Nissen, there was a change in the law that arguably was to protect homeowners' interest in equity in their home when taken by a county, uh, by way of tax deed foreclosure, but there are so many ambiguities within the law that it leaves a lot of questions, a lot of open liability, so all, nearly all the counties are asking the legislature to fix it, that's what this resolution is.
And I'll be taking that resolution if we pass it, I'll be taking it to the, to the county.
Move to approve, second.
Motion made, second, and more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All in both same sign. Uh, any importantness by the county.
Well, well.
I'm aware.
Oh. Update on the county clerk?
Oh, yeah.
Um, I can just tell you that, uh, per your direction, the next county clerk, uh, needs to be appointed by the board and we put out an ad and have received as of yesterday afternoon, seven applicant, and so my next question for you is, is how do you want to proceed, do you, in other words, would you want staff, myself, you to vet some, would you like all the information of all the candidates, uh, do you want a committee to then review it or do you want it to come back to the full board in November?
Go ahead, Kim.
My thought is have HR, I mean, like, can you do any other way like we've done before? And then bring back one or two or whatever, give it down to the board.
Right, HR would probably bring back all minimally qualified candidates, um, and the difference between other jobs and this one is that, you know, you determine the qualifications cause you get to a point to fill the remainder of the term, so I think what, what we could do is have HR assign a few subject matter experts to review, rank them, you know, like, maybe even in section, so you're not saying our first choice, second choice, but these are like the top tier, these are, you know, what, or if there are concerns, like they have a felony and they couldn't hold the office, I mean, things that would exclude them, but they could bring those and that way you could then decide, I also think assigning it to general government because they fall within that division and having general government maybe make a recommendation and they can take a harder look at the applications, that way it's not fifteen of you all reviewing applicants.
And they have to be a resident of Polk County.
Or willing to move into the county by the time they would be appointed, yes.
Is that a, uh?
Do we need a motion for that or?
I think.
Or consensus, do you need a motion for that?
Are we gonna?
Consensus.
General consensus?
On the general government agenda with those.
All right. General consensus, did everybody understand what, uh, council, all this? Go ahead. Oh, you did, you're just saying, yeah.
Okay, uh.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Uh, Vince, I, I don't remember if you had mentioned anything about this, has that position ever been just always, uh, an appointed position or a hired position or?
It's a lot.
No, I, I know it is, has it?
Statute.
It's a state.
State statute that the county clerk has to be elected?
Yes.
Okay.
But then when the absence, then if there's not a deputy clerk, we can.
Okay, generally, uh, anybody that agrees with the, uh, with the counselor, uh, signify by just saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody disagree with her?
Now, our.
Somebody did one.
I think we got, I think we got the idea that was what we're gonna do from town, resolve the problem, number twelve, requirements by the county board chair that are none, county administrator, as zero, county board chair report is, I think you pretty well understand everything that I do in reference to what, what's happening in the county, because we've discussed it, discussed it in the last few meetings, so there's no reason to me elaborate on anything that I don't understand, the, uh, administrator probably would be the same thing, like, you might have.
Just got a few things, first of all, the status of the clerk's office, uh, a lot changed, right, needs to leaving, Tavana, who is our primary deputy clerk, uh, will be leaving soon for a very important matter, she'll be out of the office for a while, uh, but so Tavana. Uh, but so Shabana, the other deputy that we have is Katie Schultz. She is our new deputy clerk. And in addition to that, because they're shorthanded at a very important time, we have Anastasia Smith, who is currently our receptionist in the main building, is going to step in and help with the clerk's office. Tammy Peterson was here tonight, uh, is going to take on more responsibilities. Uh, when Shabana leaves, she'll be kind of the, uh, oversight or the acting person there to, uh, lead that organization because she's got the experience of doing this, uh, many times over. And, uh, in addition, the election, in addition to the folks I've mentioned, uh, Tammy and Gail Wasper from the veterans' office will be working on election night. Will oversee the canvassing that's required after the election. Lisa Ross has volunteered, or has said she will help on election night as well. So we're happy to have her back for that. And, uh, that's what I have on the clerk's office. So we're working to get people filled that know, you know, what they're doing so that we can, uh, keep things running as smoothly as possible. Secondly, Northwood Tech signage, if you saw the new sign, it's out front. Uh, Northwood Tech came to me a while back and said, we need better signings. Yeah, you do. We want you to have. And they agreed to provide that signing to put, uh, Polk County top billing. Uh, so that they, you know, just, that big sign out there is nice, the brick one, it's not lit up real well, people don't notice. And I think this new bright sign along the highway there is, is going to be helpful. Um, good news for GAM, they revoked it, it's a nice thing. Uh, Amory's Best Nursing Home slash Senior Living Facility and the best place to work. So congrats to uh, Dana Reese and her. And then finally, as a reminder, equestrian season on Star Trail is open. Uh, opened October first till November eighteenth, closes right before, uh, the gun season. Good thing. Good idea, right? At the last one.
Okay. Everybody, uh, the, uh, the courts, representative committee, dying.
Uh, I mean, do, uh, every spring and fall as a representative to the county, we have, uh, meetings that, uh, Stephen Point, Legislative Human Service, or Committee, basically. And one thing I wanted to bring out and Jay, uh, you sound favorite and everybody in the town. Um, what's going to be changing, they've already agreed to it basically. What's going to be changing is the, uh, uh, funding on, uh, revenue sharing. State of Wisconsin has a five billion dollar surplus. What's coming down, they pretty much agreed that they're going to change the revenue sharing to a, uh, they're going to propose to pay one billion dollars of that and, uh, allocate it that to the state proportionally. Uh, out of counties, uh, cities proportionally. And from now on, they plan on, when you achieve the sales tax. So instead of basically money coming from the taxpayer for that, it would be, a nice thing about that is sales tax is people from out of state are, are helping our. So I thought that was a big thing mentioning. I'll be going, uh, to Stephen Point again this Friday. Uh, the only one I'm not going to is the twenty-eighth. Stephen Point. And I'm having an auction on the twenty-ninth and there's something there for everybody. Live auction on the twenty-ninth. Thank you, folks.
Anybody else have anything they want to? Comment on or discuss? Question?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?